Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For a record, we have a quorum with all council members present. You may have noticed that there is a vacant seat up here. That is because we need to appoint a new council member, which was formerly my seat for Position 6, and we will be discussing the appointment process for that later this evening. Also, under announcements, I also wanted to just mention the upcoming special meeting that we'll be having with the 22nd Legislative District Delegation, which will take place here in the Olympia City Council chambers at noon on January 4th. We also will be having our upcoming annual council retreat, which will take place on January 12th and January 13th. It is an open public meeting, so the public is allowed to attend, and that will be taking place at lot on both of those days. So with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved?
That was fast. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have an agenda. First item on our agenda this evening is special recognition for the swearing-in ceremony of our newly-elected mayor and our re-elected city council members. So this is, every other year or so, this is a time where we get to swear in either re-elected or newly-elected members of the council. And so this is a very special moment, and it's my pleasure to invite up Councilmember Dani Madrone to receive her oath of office, which will be administered to her by community member Candy Bowman.
How close do we need to get?
This is good?
This is good? Yeah. Please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Dani Madrone.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
As well as Olympia City ordinances.
As well as Olympia City ordinances.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of councilmember.
Of councilmembers.
In and for the City of Olympia, Washington.
In and for the, uh...
They're so good. Olympia, Washington. As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we will have Councilmember Yiang Wen step up front to be sworn in by community member Mary Baskerville.
I, Yiang Wen.
Do solemnly affirm that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I am a citizen of the United States.
And the State of Washington.
And the State of Washington.
And I will support the Constitution and laws.
And I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
As well as the Olympia City ordinances.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of councilmember.
Perform the duties of the office of councilmember.
And for the City of Olympia, Washington.
And for the City of Olympia, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Cool.
All right, and with that, it's my pleasure to invite up someone who is very near and dear to me, who has been an excellent example, and has previously served as mayor of Tacoma. It's my pleasure to invite up Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland to administer my oath of office.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name, do solemnly affirm.
I, Dante Payne, do solemnly affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the State of Washington.
And the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Washington.
And laws of the State of Washington.
As well as Olympia City ordinances.
As well as Olympia City ordinances.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
In and for the City of Olympia, Washington.
In and for the City of Olympia, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor Payne.
At this time, I'd like to open it up for comments from council. Councilmember Madrone.
Yeah, thanks for, everyone, for being here, and it's really great to be sitting up here with you all for another term. And it is a great honor for me to be sworn in by Dr. Candy Bowman. Candy, I've known you as my student advisor at Evergreen, where you supported me in coordinating the Synergy Sustainability Conference on campus. I've known you as a farmer at Sunbreak Farm, who donated pickling workshops to the Farms Forever fundraisers I coordinated to support the local land trust. And I've also known you as a peer in our Evergreen MPA cohort, Class of 2016, where I learned from you just as much as I learned from the curriculum. We just keep finding our way back together, and you've supported me every step of the way. So this oath that I've taken for the City of Olympia, it's also for you. You are a mentor, a fellow mother in this community, and a friend that holds me up, keeps me accountable, and reminds me that I'm not the kind of person who will give up when things get tough. I'm sure you remember my first year on council. And it was one of the hardest years of my life. Between the global pandemic and months of civil unrest, starting in this role in 2020, was difficult, to say the least. But you, Candy, and others, others around me, kept me moving forward and focused on accomplishing the things that I came here to do. And seeing our progress as a city, and the deep collaboration with my colleagues and with city staff and the community, that makes me really excited for another term. And so we're in the process of updating our comprehensive plan. This is the 20-year vision for the community, and as a city government, we know so much more now than we did the last time we did an update 10 years ago. We're much more clear on our goals for housing and homelessness, climate change, environmental stewardship, active transportation, economic resilience, public safety. Before 2021, our comprehensive plan didn't even have the word equity in it. We've since amended it to incorporate equity as a city value, and over the next year and a half, we will weave it throughout our roadmap for the future. We will also continue to build on our strong relationship with the Squawson Island Tribe, on whose traditional lands we reside, as we consult with them on Olympia's future. So I'm grateful for the trust of the community for me to continue to serve in this position, and I pledge to listen, I pledge to collaborate, and I pledge to work diligently across all the interests of our community to advance our priorities.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Wen?
I am so happy right now, and I also feel a pinch-me moment, and being re-elected to council, I've learned so much during my first three years. It was a series of pinch-me moments. There's really, really high highs being on council and really low lows, and even when we go through something as colleagues, have to make a really tough decision, and maybe we're not aligned, or the community itself is not aligned, maybe it's really contentious, and at the end of the day, you still have that feeling, I still get that feeling, like, wow, I got to be a part of impacting that, and that's really special, and we're going to come back and we're going to do it again, and we're going to show up. And so it's just been this series of pinch-me moments, and I have, yeah, I think it's just really special, and maybe, I hope that I'll continue feeling that way, and I think that whenever I have that, or no longer have that feeling of like, wow, is this really happening? Do I really still get to do this? Maybe it's time to hang up things. But tonight's one of those moments, and I'm really, I feel really blessed to be here before you all, to be sitting with council colleagues, this time not on Zoom, right? But doing it for real here in person, and having had made deeper connections with these people that I've gotten a chance to work with over the last few years, and have my parents here, and have my partner here, and a family friend, Mary, that administered the oath just now, that has known me ever since I was really little, and we were at the PX together, and you told me that you would paint one of my fingernails, and you would, and I could not tell my mother, but I told her right away. And you tell that story all the time. It's cuter when Mary tells it. And I just really appreciate, there's a little bit of a pinch-me moment, and then also kind of a mashup of my worlds tonight, and I feel an immense sense of gratitude, and even when it gets really tough performing the duties of council, I really can't think of a better, more valuable way to spend my time, and I look forward to prioritizing all the things that I continue saying I will, which is public health and safety, economic resiliency, and climate justice, and all the work that we do for the City of Olympia, and leading with equity, with the arts, and with small business. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Partially.
Mine's pretty quick. Welcome back, Councilmember Madrone, Councilmember Wen. I look forward to your voices as we make decisions, as we debate, as Councilmember Wen so graciously said at times. Because your what-if voices, your what-about voices, help us be better and perform in better ways and build better policies. But when I walked in the room before anyone else arrived, I got to see the person next to me sitting in his rightful seat, and that was my pinch-me moment. I just stood there for a minute and looked. I am so looking forward to what you're going to do with us as a leader, and leading this sometimes contentious council forward, but always doing it with grace.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Partially, and thank you to Olympia voters who gave me this amazing opportunity to serve you. Thank you to every single person who supported me on the campaign trail, whether that was with your time or your money, your support, your enthusiasm and encouragement is genuinely appreciated. A special thank you to all of the community members and elected officials who came before me that played a role in helping make this community a better place, and has contributed so much to the things we still enjoy in this community today, especially to our former mayor, Cheryl Selby, who we miss very much. I also want to thank my councilmates and the city staff for all of their support and encouragement. I've learned so much from each of you, and I'm grateful to you all personally and professionally. I'm looking forward to working alongside you in this new role, and I can already tell it's going to be fun. Last, but certainly not least, I want to thank my family, both immediate and extended family, for their support, their patience, their willingness to share my time with our community. It's not easy to be the family member of a public servant, and I recognize the sacrifice that you also make, so thank you. Yeah, my daughter's dancing right now, she's loving it. And also, I just want to say thank you to our Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland for taking the time out to be here today, to see me sworn into office, and it's genuinely appreciated, so thank you. So although it's a tremendous honor to serve as mayor, it certainly has its challenges. I'm grateful to have the support of my family, my friends, and my colleagues, and the members of this community. It's not lost on me what a historic moment this is for someone like me to be seated in this seat. It's historic because it's not really about me, it's about us and what we can do together as a community, and just look at what we've accomplished. President Lyndon B. Johnson understood just how challenging the role of mayor can be at times, and at one time, he said the following, quote, "When the burdens of the presidency seem unusually heavy, I always remind myself, it could be worse, I could be a mayor," unquote. So several times, I've been asked by our community members, why would I want to serve as mayor at such a tumultuous time for politics in our nation? And my response is that it is precisely because it is a tumultuous time, that this and so much is on the line, that I can't just sit back and watch as things happen to the people I know and love and care for in this community. And as the great Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "We need leaders not in love with money, but in love with justice; not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity." And that's why I've stepped up to serve as your mayor. Despite the challenges, serving others is rewarding, and it's my honor, and I believe it's my moral duty. Whenever there's a change in leadership, many of us see the potential, and we get excited about the future possibilities, and we should. However, I have a gavel, not a magic wand. I will not solve all of our community's issues alone. This council cannot do it alone. We need all of our community members to be invested in making Olympia better. It is my job as the leader to call upon this common purpose for us all, help identify solutions, and take action. But this is a new chapter for the City of Olympia, not just for us, but for Thurston County. We have an expanded county commission, port commission, we have a new sheriff, we have new leaders in our state legislature, and we have a relatively new representative in Congress. We have new leaders throughout our region who are energetic and innovative, and I believe that they will help us into the future with very rich progress. And so there's so much opportunity there that's just waiting for us to reach out and grab it, and I'm really excited to lead us in this next chapter of the capital city story, so thank you all so very much. Okay, and at this time, I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess.
Are we going to have votes speak?
Oh, yes, you're right. Thank you. See, this is what happens from time to time. So, and it's not going to change in four years. So I would like to invite up Candy Bowman, who I believe has a few words that she would like to share.
First of all, congratulations, Mayor Payne, Councilmember Wen, Councilmember Madrone. It's a good day to be a greener. It's wonderful to see so much evergreen on this council. But my comments are directed to Councilmember Madrone. I want to thank you for letting me be a part of this moment, this really important moment. As a constituent, a friend, and a fellow public servant, I am just so proud of your commitment to this community. I'm inspired by your tenacity to do challenging but meaningful policy work, and simply in awe of the community accomplishments and the professional growth that you've achieved in your first term. Now, more than ever, we need community members that will not only fight for what is right, but also will grow what is good. We need neighbors that are willing to stand for justice and sit in the discomfort that systemic change requires. We also need leaders, it's a good thing. We need leaders that will innovate the roads that our kids bike on, enrich our local food systems, and get excited, and I mean really excited, about comprehensive planning. We need leaders that can listen, we need leaders that can learn, we need leaders that can change with us, for us. You, Councilmember Madrone, are that leader, that community member, and that neighbor that this city deserves, and I cannot wait to see what your second term holds. Congratulations again.
Okay, I'd like to invite up Congresswoman Strickland for a few words.
Well, good evening, Olympia City Council and Mayor Dante Payne. I first want to thank you all for re-upping for this job, and I say that with all sincerity, so let's give them a round of applause. A few years ago, someone asked me, when I first got elected to Congress, what's harder, being mayor or being a member of Congress? And I've often said that mayor is the best job in politics, but it is now the hardest job in politics. There are so many challenges that we face that have now become localized, and your community's going to depend on you. In your remarks, you said that they gave you the opportunity, they chose you. They chose you to lead, and you will do it in a way that's collaborative, that's inclusive, that's equitable, but remember, your community chose you, Mayor Dante Payne. Now Dante Payne, father, husband, son, military veteran, he has served his country and served it well, and he continues to do so. And there's one point of pride I want to take right now. Aside from making history as the first African-American man to serve as mayor of Olympia and LGBTQ member, the cities of Seattle, Tacoma, and Olympia now all have African-American mayors. And I say that as a point of pride because they chose the most qualified people for these jobs, but it also speaks to who we are as a community up and down the I-5 corridor. We believe in inclusion. We believe that people who are qualified and smart deserve the opportunity to lead us, and we've done just that. So I want to end by a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. "The true measure of a man is not where he stands in times of comfort and convenience, but where he stands in times of challenge and controversy." As your Congresswoman, I am grateful that Dante Payne is my mayor in Olympia. Thank you and congratulations.
Well, and with that, we will recess for 10 minutes. It is now 6:25. Thank you. All right, so we will go ahead and move in right along here with, we have a poetry reading from our city's poet laureate Kathleen Byrd, but first, she'll be introduced by Stephanie Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, and members of council. I'm Stephanie Johnson with Olympia Parks Arts and Recreation, and I'm delighted to be here today with Kathleen Byrd, who was appointed last July as poet laureate through 2025. Kathleen is our fourth poet laureate, and part of the work of Olympia's poet laureate is to present a poem at a January City Council meeting of each year, and the goals of the poet laureate program are to promote poetry as an art form, expand access to the literary arts, connect the community to poetry, and promote poetry as a community voice that contributes to a sense of place, and to address the topic of the poet laureate appointment, which this term is to utilize the power of poetry and language to contribute thoughtful response and centering around our environment and climate change. So with that, I'm delighted to introduce Olympia poet laureate Kathleen Byrd.
I'm going to bring this up a little bit. Thank you, Stephanie Johnson, for that introduction. I'm just honored and delighted to be here, but mostly to serve as Olympia's poet laureate, and I usually explain to people, what is the poet laureate? It's really a civic role, so I think of myself as a civic poet. It's been really delightful to engage the community with poetry, particularly around the environment and climate change, so, and I'm just really got started with the work in September, and it's been a lot of fun. And I brought two poems this evening because I couldn't decide. I really wanted to share this poem by Joy Harjo. Joy Harjo was the poet laureate at the national level, so a U.S. poet laureate, from 2019 to 2023, and that role is now Ada Lamon is the current U.S. poet laureate. This is a poem by Joy Harjo, Eagle poem. "To pray, you open your whole self to earth, to sun, to moon, to one whole voice that is you. And know there is more that you can't see, can't hear, can't touch, can't know, except in languages that are not always sound, but other circles of motion. Like eagle that Sunday morning over Salt River, circled in sky, in wind, in, over Salt River, with sacred wings swept our hearts clean. We see you, see ourselves, and know that we must take the utmost care and kindness in all things. Breathe in, knowing we were made of all this, and breathe, knowing we were born and die soon in a true circle of motion. Like eagle rounding out the morning inside us, we pray it will be done in beauty, in So that's Joy Harjo's poem. I really had it memorized by heart, and then I'd lost the line, which happens when I get nervous. See, I don't memorize any of my own poems, and I wrote a whole series of oyster poems, which, there are all these local creatures that come into my work, opossums, oysters, herons, but I have this series of oyster poems. This one's just titled "Oysters." I wanted to write about them, their luminescent pearl essences, their briny, watery world, their cold, slick sexiness, but I got stuck on intelligence. So I searched the internet for the mind of the mollus- So I searched the Internet for the mind of the mollusk and found much on the mind of the octopus, also a mollusk, but not an oyster. Did you know that some vegans eat them? Because the case could be made, they're not even as sentient as trees. I have eaten an oyster or two, raw, whole. Their taste is metallic, zinc, shiny, a shell, a map of their world. Interior they are, oysters, their shells are their stars, their meteors, their sky. Shucked, they reveal the whole ocean on a half-shell. A heat wave will kill them, cook them on the beach. Dirty work they do, purling, filtering what harms us all, all murky, all mind, all murky heart, no central nervous system, intestinal intelligence, shell. They do what oysters do, we don't know. I wanted to draw the sharp curve of the shell's edge, a kind of protection. I wanted to merge tidally breath and ocean cold, breath and salts, or being and not even breathing. Their tender bodies at rest, mussels, clams, oysters, snails, barnacles, crabs, sea stars, the die-off is staggering. Oyster, a world, I heard, the world is mine. I have taken you whole, I have eaten, and staggering, I don't know if you or if we will survive." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here this evening and really just setting the tone for us for the year. That's very much appreciated. You know, I was just taking a look at the staff report here, and I actually think I want to read some of the things that you have accomplished in your first quarter as our new poet laureate. So you've conducted an eco-poetry reading group on the writings of the National poet laureate Ada Limone. You have conducted an eco-poetry writing workshop centered around autumn and earth. You were featured as a reader in November's Olympia Poetry Network monthly gathering. And you've also conducted a climate writing workshop with the Thurston Youth Climate Coalition. So, and you're just getting started. So thank you very much for that work and for representing us at the city. Thank you. Any comments from the dais? Mayor Protem Gilman.
Kathleen, thank you for bringing us good words to begin a new year. I'm wondering if you or Stephanie might be able to, we have a little bit larger audience out in the ether than we do here in the room. And so if you might offer to folks, what's the upcoming schedule for ways to participate in poetry work? That would be helpful.
I'm sort of embarrassed to say I don't remember all the dates. But there will be another reading group in February at Browser's. And the next reading group is focused on Camille Dungy's work, Ecotrophic. And it's a wonderful collection, but I believe it's also full. Am I right, Stephanie? Okay. And following that, in February, there will be another writing about place with winter's theme being water, and those are at the Harbor House. I think those are the two. Well, I'm also scheduled to be part of a salon in April. And that's going to be at the Washington Center, with there will be other artists there. And I'll be reading some of my personal work there. But in terms of engaging some of the other and writing poetry and learning about some of our poets that are writing about climate change, it's the reading group series and the writing group series.
So just to add a little bit to that, when we put those reading and writing series out, they filled almost immediately. So what I've been doing is been checking in, hey, you signed up, do you still want to do this? And if they don't, I make it available on the Arch Digest. So if you wouldn't mind a tiny little plug, if folks go to the City of Olympia website, hit or type in subscribe into the search bar, it will take you to our MailChimp signup. And if you hit the Arts and Culture box, you'll get an email from us each week, including a notice when there's positions open for these workshops or when new workshops come up.
Thank you, Stephanie. Councilmember Partially.
My question or comment was similar to Mayor Protem Gilman's. But I just wanted to say that your piece transformed me or transmuted me out onto the Puget Sound, and I can actually smell and taste those oysters. So thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you so much, Kathleen. All right, so that takes us to public comment. It looks like we have one person signed up remotely this evening. So the, just, you know, for, it looks like this person has spoken within the last 30 days. But just as a reminder that you will have two minutes. There will be a timer that will appear on your screen as well. You will have two minutes for your comments. If you do not get an opportunity to finish your comments, feel free to email them to us as well. So I will call forward Kalen Dolly. And forgive me if I have mispronounced your name.
It looks like Kalen has left the list.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, looks like we don't have anyone for public comment. So we will move on to our first order of business for the evening, which is the selection of a noon. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm moving too fast. With that, I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approving tonight's consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. Thank you very much. So we will move on to item 6A, which is the appointment of our mayor pro tem. We will be accepting a nomination for a member of the city council to be appointed as the pro tem. So with that, is there a motion to open nominations for the position of mayor pro tem?
I move to open nominations.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Nominations are opened for mayor pro tem of the council. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Yuen Huen for mayor pro tem.
Okay. Councilmember Wen, do you accept the nomination?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion about the nominee? Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I could speak to why I nominated Councilmember Huen. You know, in your three years that you've been on council, I have seen you build really strong relationships with each of us sitting up here on the dais, as well as with all of the staff that we work with regularly to do our work. And I think that you bring a really great perspective. I think you're very thoughtful about what the needs are for everybody who is working together on some really tough issues. And I think that you would do a really good job representing all of us and making sure that our processes are working out well.
Thank you. And I'll just add, you know, as your colleague that has served with you in community livability and public safety, I've had an opportunity to work alongside you with former mayor Selby in that committee. And you and I have really formed a great working relationship together. And I think that I've had plenty of opportunities to observe you in several settings, both within and outside of committee. And each time, you've demonstrated your ability to think outside of the box, to ask the hard questions that need to be asked when they're necessary to ask. You've also, you know, have not been afraid to disagree with me at times. And as mayor pro tem, I think that that will be very important for you to serve as that voice for the rest of our council as well. And so it's my honor to cast my vote for you as the mayor pro tem this evening. Okay. All of those in favor of Councilmember Wen for the position of mayor pro tem signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. Any comments from the dais? Councilmember Partially, followed by Mayor Protem Wen.
Councilmember Wen, I guess, ooh, oops, mayor pro tem. I'm glad to get to be able to call you that the first time. You've also been not only not afraid to do the what-if questions, what-about questions, which I really appreciate as a councilmate with you, but also how you treat our guests in this room has always been gracious, with respect and gratitude, and with the staff, the same thing. So I just want to say welcome.
Mayor Protem Wen, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
I can't believe that just happened. I, I'm really excited. And I am a little bit out of the lice for words. I feel really honored to be nominated and supported by my colleagues. And thank you for those of you that have shared very kind words. I see the mayor pro tem role as very relational. And I look forward to learning, stepping into this role, learning about how I can have the councils back, right? And such a unique thing because, you know, we don't, you know, we all have different styles and how we approach things. And at the end of the day, we work together. And so I'll look forward to hearing your feedback, each of you individually, about how I might best support you in this role. And I'm also really grateful for the opportunity to learn in this position and to support our new mayor. So thank you for your support, and thank you for entrusting me with this. And I trust you'll let me know how I can, how I can best support. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Sounds a good ring to it. Well, first, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Gilman because he's been our mayor pro tem for a minute and probably through what will be, hopefully, the hardest times our city goes through for a long, long time. And we know, at least today, it is. And you've been there as a strong partner with the city manager and the mayor through all of that time and probably the most underappreciated position in the city, to be totally honest. All of us sit in and out of agenda setting and see that constant dialogue that's maintained by the mayor and the mayor pro tem and the city manager to keep, just keep things moving and make sure that we have an agenda to sit down at as sort of the secondary benefit of that meeting sometimes. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to have you as our mayor pro tem. So I want to give you a round of applause. And Councilmember Wen, Mayor Protem Wen, congratulations on a term. Councilmember Madron as well, and your reelection. And really looking forward to seeing what you and our new mayor bring to our city council as our leaders and our facilitators. So congratulations and go do it.
Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wen, I know, I have great confidence that you'll ably represent the interests of council and represent the community and that you'll help us to stay together as a group and move through difficult issues. So I'm glad that you'll be there. And I appreciate the trust that was offered me, and I will retire the role there.
Well, you know, I just wanted to take the time to just repeat. You know, I said some things to you earlier today, Councilmember Gilman. But really, what I really want to express publicly to you is your gratitude for your service for the last three years as our mayor pro tem. You know, for those of you who might be paying somewhat of attention to this process, yes, we normally do select the mayor pro tem at our council retreat. We decided not to do that this year just because we wanted to create more space on our retreat agenda to address other items. And so this was, seemed like the most efficient and practical way to do it ahead of the retreat. But with that being said, you know, Councilmember Gilman, you have done very well in the position in terms of striking that balance between the mayor and the council for us, and I want to thank you for that. And also, as I said earlier, you know, your ability to, and as our city manager spoke to so eloquently earlier, your ability to represent council's voice and not compromise your values is something that's really admirable, and you've done that very well for this council. So thank you very much for your services, our pro tem.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to item 6B, which is the approval of our 2024 city council retreat agenda, which we will be presented, presented to us by our city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Members of the council, again for the record, Jay Burney, city manager. And Kelly's going to help me here because I think we need to get this on Friday. I'm here tonight to talk with you about your proposed agenda for your upcoming retreat, which you mentioned under announcements. Thank you, Kelly. I've had a chance to work with your retreat facilitator. As council knows, you have a new retreat facilitator this year, Amy Leniker. So I've been working with Amy, had a chance to debrief with Amy through all of the interviews she had with all of you and work with her to put together an agenda that I think meets your expectations from those, that interview process, and kind of what I've heard from all of you individually along the way. So Friday is your first day. Maybe before we get there, there's some pre-work for all of you. So you'll notice at the top of the agenda, there are three items of pre-work for you. One is you're going to spend some time on your working agreements. And so we'll make sure those are included in your packet. Same with the 2024 work plan. We have been working on that as a staff. We just put the finishing touches on it this last week. We're going to get that out to you this week, so you have some time with it before the retreat to kind of sit with it, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. And to start your discussions, I know which will happen amongst yourselves prior to the retreat around your inter-jurisdictionals and committee assignments. So you can be prepared to have that discussion with each other, which will happen on Saturday. So that'll be your homework, which all of you asked in your interviews for some pre-work to be done ahead of time. So your wish is granted. We've got some pre-work for you. So on Friday, your agenda, a lot of the work outside of your committee assignments is going to happen on Friday. You also have mentioned many times that you really enjoy having the department directors there to share some of your time with your retreat. So they will all be joining you on Friday for the two items on your agenda, which is, the first is, you know, after Amy does some work, she's got a group check-in, which is really around your working agreements, to do a check-in. In particular, because you will have a new council member appointed by then, it's a good time to check in on your working agreements to make sure they work for all of you still and the newest member of your team. So she'll do that, and then we'll dig into the work plan. One of the things that you all asked for is, in the last retreats, we spent probably a couple hours or more on developing the work plan together. And one of the things that you've checked in with me about and facilitator is to have staff do a lot of that pre-work ahead of time to bring you a work plan and that we don't need to spend as much time on it in your retreat. So we will have that for you. So part of that conversation around your work plan, we will have it for in advance. And we'll present to you the criteria that we as a staff use to figure out what rises to the occasion of being on your work plan. As council knows, not everything on your work plan represents all of the work that is done at the City of Olympia. A lot of our core services aren't represented there, but it is really those things that have high community interest and speak to your community survey, have high interest in the comp plan process and other items. And we'll go through all that criteria with you to make sure we got it right. So that's what that conversation will be about. And then the rest of your afternoon. And then the rest of your afternoon, and again, the department directors are going to join you for that as well, is really going to be to dig into a long-term budget discussion. So we'll, we'll start off kind of defining the problem. We'll look at the 10-year forecast again, which many of you have seen before. And Aaron will start to share that with you. I'm going to talk a little bit about what drives our general fund expenses. I think it's important that when we think about things like reductions, there's a lot of limitations that you have on your general fund because of different revenue streams. And I think it's important that we talk about that. So we'll talk about what drives our general fund expenditures, talk a bit about the guardrails that we have in place. One of those being your long-term financial strategy, the comprehensive plan. Those should be the things that help us guide what gets included in the budget, what does not get included in the budget, how we make smart decisions. And kind of doubling down, particularly on a long-term financial strategy, is going to be really important moving forward when we know we have a significant budget issue facing us into the future years. And then we'll break out of that and, and have an afternoon break. And then we'll start to dig into different revenue options that are available to you. Some that are easier to understand for the community, some that might be a little more complicated. And then get some direction from you about which of those items you'll want further exploration through the finance committee in order to make a recommendation to you in terms of what path you might want to take, both on the expense side and on the revenue side. So that's how your afternoon shapes up on Friday. Again, we'll start at 11:30. We'll have lunch provided and then we'll, we'll dig in and start to work at noon. You probably may not be done with your lunch, but we'll kind of work through lunch and get started. And then that evening, we do have a dinner plan with the council and the city manager at, at Dockside at 5:30. And then something that I think that Councilmember Gilman will talk about in his reports is, also, he put out an invite for many of us to attend the MLK event at SPSCC later that evening at 7:30. I think some of you are planning to attend that as well and I will be there with you. So that's your, your first evening. So before I go on to Saturday, any questions on how Friday is shaping up for you?
Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was just curious about the SPS event. Was that something that was being booked for everyone or do we need to do that individually? Because I, I took it in the email, like it was part of the retreat kind of, so.
Yeah, so I think Susan put out an email to all of you to say, anybody interested, please let her know. And then she's going to reserve your spot for you if you got back to Susan. Thank you. Okay?
I think we're good.
All right. Moving on to Saturday and Kelly's going to do that for me. There we go. Thank you, Kelly. So, so Saturday really is around, we're going to look at your council calendar. And we'll have, again, that'll be part of your packet. We will put together a proposed calendar that takes into account things that we know, kind of your, based on kind of what, how you've taken vacations in the past, times of the year, those types of things. And that'll be an opportunity for all of you to kind of give some input there. And we can definitely move things around based on your input in terms of what weeks you want to take off, et cetera. Amy's got, on that day, she does have a team connection. You all asked for a little bit of team connection work and bonding work at your retreat. So she's going to take some time to do an exercise with you on Saturday to do, especially with a new council member, a little bit of, of team bonding. And then we'll dig in after the morning break into your committee assignments and your inter-jurisdictionals. And then after lunch, we have a walking tour of Lot, since we'll be at Lot. Matt Cannelly has graciously agreed to come in on Saturday and he loves to do this and give a tour of Lot. I personally haven't been on a tour of the new facility in, I think, probably 10 years. So I'm also looking forward to that tour. So we've got some time programmed in for there. And then coming back out of that, we'll have a wrap-up of your day, excuse me, of the entire retreat. Talk about any follow-ups or next steps and conclude out and get you out of there by 3 o'clock on Saturday. So that is what I have for you for your retreat. I'm going to be checking in with Amy again on the 8th post this meeting for any other changes, modifications. But, and I am working on with staff on how we'll walk through your work plan and your budget presentation. So I'll have more to, more to check in with you on that. But any questions, comments, changes, edits?
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, one thing I recall, so the agenda was, you know, originally built with the, the committee of chairs to bring stuff forward and then you shopped it out to everybody. And one thing that we've included in our retreats in the past is some, something focused on equity. You know, some kind of training. And what we talked about potentially doing for this retreat is getting a training for us as a council on the equity framework that we use to make our decisions. And I, I don't see that on there. So was there a decision at some point to take that off?
Yeah, thanks for asking that question. I should have brought that up in, in my summary of your retreat. So we're, as we've learned and grown the equity framework over the course of the first year using it, we're making some adjustments to it. And we're working through those adjustments with Toby and Debbie's team. And they weren't quite ready for prime time. And so we're planning to bring that to you at your mid-year retreat is to bring you a more in-depth discussion and training around the use of the equity framework because we're making some adjustments to it. So that was the conversation we had as a staff.
Okay, that makes sense. I still wonder like how we could incorporate some discussion around equity. You know, it could be in our discussion around values. I don't know what Amy has planned. Or we, or we just, you know, come back to it in the mid-year retreat in June. I don't know. But I just know that we have high expectations around our staff doing regular equity treatments and we need to also be doing that ourselves. And the retreat is usually when we do that.
Yeah. I will talk to Amy about that, see if maybe she can work that into. I'm not exactly sure either what she has planned for the values exercise, but I will talk with her about that.
I'll also know, I don't want to try to squeeze anything in because we're already pinched for time. So adding anything in is going to make a longer day on either Friday or Saturday if it can't be cleanly woven into something that's already there.
Thank you for that. I'll take that feedback back to Amy, see what we can do with it.
Thank you, Jay. So I just have a question in your response to the Councilmember Madron's question about the equity framework. So how exactly, if, if we're making some tweaks to it, I just want to confirm that obviously it's still expected that city staff are using that framework for projects going forward until, as we make these adjustments. Is that correct?
That is correct. So we'll still be using it. They'll still be using it in terms of how they write their staff reports, how they walk through the tool. But we've learned some things from staff as we've gotten feedback from staff about how they're using the tool and what could be more beneficial for them in terms of how that tool works for them. So we're going to continue to make those adjustments. We'll have that ready for you. If we have it ready before the retreat, we may bring you the update before the retreat and then use time at the retreat to kind of talk about how we all use it together.
Thank you.
Debbie, did I get that right?
Councilmember Partially followed by Mayor Pro Tem Wen.
I do like that, Mayor Pro Tem Wen. And Mayor Payne, this is great. I'll be better next meeting. My question would be, are we going to show the updated equity lens to the Community Livability Committee before we bring it to retreat? And are you thinking, is it even worthwhile to take it to the Social Justice and Equity Commission first?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to look over at Debbie for the answers to those.
Yes to both. So you've been reading Toby's work plan, I can tell. But yeah, she's working on the equity framework. And part of the update to the framework is she's developing a tool that can be used for the comprehensive plan work as well. So we wanted to have an opportunity to do that holistically, bring it to the Social Justice and Equity Commission, bring it to CLIPS and then bring it to council.
Mayor Pro Tem Wen.
I'm really loving this discussion. I am so glad that it's not off the table and I look forward to what the staff come up with. Also, it's for our mid-year retreat. But it's something to be said that the city organization is taking a look into the feedback of, okay, we have this new tool, how is it working out? And, and it's an iterative process, right? We're not ever done with it.
Right.
Yeah. I said, I'll, I'll just share. Councilmember Cooper said, every item on the agenda is equity work. And he's right. And he's right. So, but it is important that we get that training. So you had said on that first slide, Jay, that on Friday, there were some homework to do. And so I just want to make sure that we're all really clear and definitely myself on, what is our homework for your retreat?
So three things at the top of the page one. So one is I'll send out your current version of your council working agreements that you currently have in place. So you all can take a look at that and come prepared to discuss any changes or modifications you might suggest to your council working agreements or be ready to be open to feedback from, from other council members on that. Second is we will send out, again, the proposed 2024 work plan. So it's just to make sure you get a chance to look through. There's about 62 projects on that work plan that are of high priority. They're broken out by comp plan focus areas. So we'll have that for you. The work plan will include who the staff lead is, what we're hoping to do with that item in terms of the deliverable for each of those items. So you can take a look at that and then come prepared to have any, with any questions or anything we might have missed off, off the work plan. So that's that. And then the third is just getting ready for the inter-jurisdictionals and committee assignments, which, you know, the feedback from Amy is, is whatever work you all can do working together in advance of the retreat to make sure you all are talking to each other about things you're interested in or might make that discussion work a little easier at your retreat. So that is the homework there.
Five meetings.
Any other questions? Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, two things. You mentioned the focus areas. When you send out the work plan, can you also send out the focus areas? I remember Stacy Ray came and presented on the focus areas to us. And we had a little bit of feedback for, you know, how those were shaping up, but we haven't seen them since then. So making sure that we have those focus areas in front of us with all of the information associated, I think, would be really helpful. And also, you know, we have 50 minutes for the 2024 work plan. That does seem like a short amount of time to get through our work plan for an entire year. So I'll just, I'll just note that. Are we also going to have department directors joining us like we've done the past couple of retreats?
Yep, they'll all be there on Friday.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
And I think part of the reason we shrunk the time is we spent, we spent a lot of time as an executive team working through this work plan for you and doing the pre-work in advance. We'll go through some criteria and I'm hoping, I think, we're hopeful we hit the mark here in terms of what's there. And then the conversation about what's missing hopefully will be, will be brief.
Yeah, does that include, that includes our discussion around prioritization. So that's probably what we're familiar with. It seeming like it's taking a while because we did that P1, P2, P3 exercise.
And we kind of cut that out. So we, we did the P1, P2, P3 for you as a staff, kind of working through that. And the items that kind of have risen out of that, we'll talk about and we'll bring you that list. And so that's some of the feedback I got from a lot of you was, it seems like that's a lot of work the staff can do to kind of do some of that pre-work for us. So we've done that and we'll bring that criteria as part of that discussion so we can walk you through it.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially.
And I can't help but think about our priority list. And then the next two things we're going to talk about, which is the budget discussions, because even those priorities are going to be impacted by that.
Correct.
Okay. Any other? Councilmember Gilman.
I would move to approve the proposed City Council Annual Retreat Agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the 2024 City Council Retreat Agenda signify by saying aye.
Could I ask a question real quick? Are we approving it as discussed? Because we, there's been some feedback given. So are we moving to approve what's published or as discussed?
I took it as discussed.
Okay.
So I didn't make a motion as discussed. So I would like to hear a restatement either from the council members who changed something or from Jay of what changed. Because I heard a lot of discussion, but I didn't hear a lot of substantive changes to the.
Oh, okay. What we, what we talked about was figuring out how to incorporate some equity component in, which it could be woven into the values discussion, but it might be an additional item, so.
I, I would like to ask Mark, the city attorney, do we need to move to withdraw that motion and redo it?
Yes.
Okay.
Mic on. So I'm going to withdraw that motion and I would move that we approve the proposed City Council Annual Retreat Agenda as proposed to us and modified through our discussion this evening.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the 2024 City Council Annual Retreat Agenda as discussed signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion's approved. All right. So we, that takes us to item 6C, which is the approval of the appointment process and the applicants to interview for the vacant city council seat, which is position six, which we will receive a presentation from Kelly Pers Brosseth, our Strategic Communications Director.
Mayor Payne, so cool to say that. Councilmembers, Happy New Year. For the record, my name is Kelly Pers Brosseth. I'm the Strategic Communications Director for the city. I'm honored to present to you tonight on your inaugural 2024 meeting with our new mayor. I'm here to tee up your conversation about the vacant city council seat appointment process. So as a reminder and as background for community members watching tonight, Olympia City Council Position 6 became vacant on December 31st, 2023, when former council member Payne moved into the position of mayor following his successful election in November. State law gives council the authority to appoint a new member to the vacant position until the certification of the November 2025 general election, when the public will elect the next council member. From November 29th to December 15th, 2023, council accepted applications from the community for consideration of appointment to the vacant seat. Council received 16 applications. From December 18th to December 27th, 2023, council members reviewed and individually ranked the applications for consideration of an invitation to interview with council on Monday, January 20, January 8th, not 28th, 8th, we're going to do it earlier. That's where we are tonight. So there are four points to consider that you need to consider tonight. You'll need to consider how deep you want to go into your rankings and determine how many candidates will be interviewed. Your combined rankings are on the screen. From the highest rank, even though it's the lowest number, to the lowest rank, which is the highest number. Also, you'll need to determine which applicants will move forward in the interview process. You'll need to consider an interview format for your January 8th interviews. And you'll need to consider what interview questions you'd like to explore with candidate, with the candidates. I left hard copies of draft questions collected from council at your seats at the dais. And I've numbered the questions to make it more convenient for your conversation. So you're all talking apples and apples and oranges and oranges. A couple of things for you to consider. Council has the option to go into executive session tonight for the purpose of discussing qualifications if you feel you need to do that. For your discussion of the interview format, in past vacancy appointments, council has interviewed candidates together in small group panels. In 2020, which was the last time you did it, I've got a great candidate. You interviewed six candidates in two groups of three. And finally, council will need a motion to approve, moving forward, the slate of candidates for interview on, on, on January 8th. And staff will begin reaching out to candidates tomorrow with updates on the process. That's my spiel.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Mayor Pro Tem Wen.
So I might just, for starters, so we have a couple of things to do, huh, Kelly? I might just kind of start off this discussion with looking at the sum up at the end there, even though it's a ranking of 1 through 16. The sum up, I think, is, is really helpful in considering how many people we would like to interview. And I would just suppose, open for discussion, of course, but it seems like six makes sense in that there's such a lull between 38 and 46 that it just, it seems like that might be a, a good place to kind of start our discussion. I'd be interested to hear what colleagues have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Partial.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm, I'm feeling similar partly because having gone through another selection process. I, I worry when you get too many interviewees that each one of them gets a fair voice that evening. And if we get too many, are we, are we going to be able to have adequate time to question each and hear their answers and evaluate them? So I'm leaning in that same direction to have no more than six at this point. So I'm leaning in that same direction, to have no more than six at this point, partly because of the experience last time. I do feel like some of the folks that interviewed, because they came at the end of the evening, it was an exhausting evening for everybody, that maybe they weren't their best self and maybe we weren't as attentive as we could have been.
Councilmember Madron.
Can I ask a clarifying question of Councilmember Partially? So last time we did six. And are you saying that we should do six as a full panel rather than split it up into two panels?
Yes.
Okay. I, yeah, and I, I agree with that, I just wanted to be clear.
I thought actually we did more than six, we did seven last time.
Oh, we did seven.
We did four in the first and three in the last.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
And I, I would rather have everybody at one time, because I, I do feel like if you get a chemistry difference between the two groups, even between the panel, the interview panel, it just, I, I don't want to disadvantage anyone.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree with that. I was going to suggest the same thing, six people, one panel.
All right. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I, I agree with what has been said. I could go for six in a panel or one at a time, but not really much, much different than that. But I like the six-person panel that's been suggested. And I, I agree the cutoff should be like 40 or less.
Mayor Protem, win.
A little bit being cheeky, but I thought you all did a fantastic job at the last appointment process. I felt like it went very well. I am, I am curious about the, so I hear you about having different voices, Councilmember Partially, and making sure that, you know, really that everyone gets a fair shake, right? I do wonder though, have interviewing six people at the same time does seem like, can be limiting? And then folks are over here getting a little bit more time to think about the question versus other folks, and so I, I'd be interested in doing it three and three. So I'm not sure if that's off the table, but.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Madron.
So having heard from somebody who was appointed through the process, it might be interesting to hear from anybody else at the table who was part of that last review process. You, I mean, your reflection from being on the other side of it, because I, I understand, you know, it is challenging to come up with a clever answer when you're the sixth person with the same question. That's, that's, that's not a great thing to set up. I'd, I'm just be curious to hear your reflection on going through the process last time.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, you know, we were put into, we did this over Zoom when I was part of this process and we did, we sort of had folks waiting, waiting, a separate Zoom waiting area so that they, it was fair to all of the applicants and they couldn't hear the questions that were being asked or, or watch from another device, you know, that sort of thing. And so we need to, in my opinion, we should be creating a similar environment to make sure that there is a fairness in the process.
Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Partially.
We're going to be discussing questions tonight, they're going to be known in advance, aren't they?
They're going, no. We're going to do it by number.
Oh, yeah, okay. How did, how did it go when you were appointed, Clark? Wasn't a full panel for you, like everybody at once?
No, it was, it was similar to what we did on Zoom. It was two panels and we were sequestered in the room next door and then, and came in. And then we had, I don't know what they call it, a final peg team rumble playoff sort of thing, where they, they took people from each of the panels and made a, a third panel. Narrowed it down, which took a long time, it was quite late when we got out that evening, so. I, I'm just, one, one thing about the, the list is that there were people who I thought were totally capable of serving well on council way down the list. I also think if, if we're looking at the combination of sort of the resume and skills, the likelihood of playing well and working together with us and having alignment with values that we want to see represented on council, that I like that sort of natural division that came, that we really grouped pretty tightly around the first six.
Councilmember Partially.
I'm, I am totally game with whatever the, you know, the majority of the council, if you want to do three and three. And, and I, my memory was in 2021 that it was kind of, not quite the short straw, but random who got grouped, is that correct? And I would be okay with the random pick that night as everybody arrived, just so that we kind of let statistics and the roll of the dice select who's in each of the groups. I would appreciate that.
Bent knives.
Bent knives, yeah. We had fun with that, didn't we?
Some people had fun.
And so I'm totally good with that, and I agree with you, there was this, this application packet, I read every application without knowing who it was. I separated out and read the questions and then put a pile together and then figured out who they belonged to. And I think every person that is listed up there, if they're not selected, I hope they understand that they are qualified people and they should reach out and join one of our advisory councils, committees, commission, because we need your voices. And I read a lot of excellent words.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I kind of just want to sum up what I think I'm hearing so far. So I'm hearing that we're thinking six candidates to interview. I'm hearing an interest for dividing them up into two panels of three, and that we would select randomly by drawing straw for which candidates are on each panel. Sounds good to everyone? Councilmember Cooper.
So moved.
Second.
Are we voting on this?
I'm not sure there was a.
She said we needed to vote on.
We needed to vote on that part of it. Oh, because we're doing, who, okay, yeah.
Those six names.
Got it, okay. Councilmember Madron, did you have a question?
Just an unfinished thought from before. I don't know, I like the idea of having everybody on a panel together. I, I, I guess it does end up like giving certain people more time with a question than others, but that's going to happen anyway. And if we have enough questions that you cycle around who asks first and who doesn't, you know, then, I don't know, I, I, I'm, I'm still favoring having everybody as a panel, but open to splitting it up if that's what more people want.
I just have to voice that I agree. I think it allows us also to see how they interact with each other, which will tell us how they're going to interact with us up here.
Mayor Protem, win.
This is a very daunting process for many people. I think that we can help with the vibe, if you will, in the room and with honestly my attention span. If we do split it up into groups, I don't think it's going to take us that long and it'll give people more time to thoughtfully answer the question. And it's tough if, you know, you go down the line, even if you switch who talks first, you go down the row and, and someone said all the buzzwords already and it's like, what, what else am I going to say? And so I would just, I'm really supportive of splitting it up into groups.
I'm not married one way, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling that way, but if the will of the council's that way, it's not going to, I'm not going to be upset.
I don't think any of us will be.
Okay. So it sounds like we still have a majority who feels that we should split the six up into two panels. Is that correct? All right, so motion carries. So that leaves us to the next segment of this. Yes, okay, so we need to, all those in favor of approving the appointment process to interview the applicants, six applicants, or for the position of city council member position number six, which will be split into two panels of three, signify by saying aye.
Perhaps we should either designate that they're the, the top scoring ones or we should use their six names to say who.
Let's do the names.
Let's do the names, okay. All right. So we are selecting the top six, correct? So that would be Carol Richmond, Kelsey Hulse, Shyrus Palatil, Courtney Sisal, Robert Vanderpool, and Omnicazi. All those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. So that removes us, moves us on to the next segment of this discussion, which is which questions to select for the interview process. I caution you that before we get into this discussion, that you do not speak to the contents of the question, but that you refer to the questions by the number that is designated on your sheet. Mayor Protem, win.
Yeah, I'm curious how we would like to narrow these down. We have quite a few thoughts on here and possible questions. Oh, I see, so it's sections. So are we hoping to get, and maybe this is a question for Kelly, are we hoping to get about one from each section, is that right?
Yeah, the, the way I laid it out is, you know, the, the first, section one question was really about introducing yourself. The section two is about, questions about the candidate's style and approach, and I recommend one question from that section. And section three is around questions on the council members' roles and council actions, and one out of that, so then you're up to three. And then section four, questions about, on city government and its function, that would be, make it four questions at that point. And section five is around a specific issue, and getting two out of that, that would put you up to seven questions, or is it, yeah, or six questions? And then section six are just sort of big questions and recommending one out of those. And then there is a closing question and then there's an opportunity for a miscellaneous question. So basically you're talking about seven, six, seven questions altogether? English major, just saying. The math doesn't always math.
Councilmember Partially.
I'm, I'm assuming with this many questions, we're going to establish ahead of time the amount of, number of minutes that each candidate, because that will determine how long, as Councilmember Gilman said, we will all be here, including them. So do we have an idea what we're going to do? Because if you do these forums out in the community, you get two minutes.
In, in previous councils, you guys have limited it to two minutes and we've used the clock.
That was going to be my suggestion as well. Thank you. I also wanted to point out for council members, your, the questions that are highlighted in green are the new questions that were submitted as well. So if you, if you're wondering what it is that you're looking at here, I really like question 2.4 that was submitted. I think it sort of gets at, you know, really something significant and important for how you'll be serving in this role.
I, I, I don't remember, and I, I'll need help with my memory on this. When we did this the last time, the mayor kind of said, okay, for section two, that's the mayor pro tem, and then had them with the council's encouragement which one they wanted to do. Like for section five, there's quite a few options there, and it was assigned to two, two of the council members and they got to pick, but as long as they didn't pick the same one, obviously. Is that where we're going or do we actually want to go 5.1 is what we want to ask?
I am completely fine with doing it the way that we've done it before, by having the individual members who are assigned by section to identify which question they would like to ask, that's fine by me. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just want to say I did the math and that's a 48-minute panel with no, no one going over if we do those eight questions at three minutes each with three people. So that would be an hour with a quick turnover break. Put that out there, then I, I like the suggestion of assigning the sections and then having people figure their own out, or people, maybe people lifting up their favorites so we hear that and then we can pick our own depending on section.
Yep, that's fine by me. Thank you for doing that math so quickly.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on format?
My, my recommendation was to have our new mayor assign the sections as they were previously, by the mayor at the time.
Happy to do that. Are we good with?
Do, do you want to just do it on the spot so that we can get the questions to Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm not quite understanding why we need to do it on the spot, particularly when you can't see what the questions are.
We, we just need to.
Read the number.
Read the number.
Just go to each section and read the number.
Okay, so section one is myself. Section two.
Last year, last time it was the mayor pro tem who asked it.
I see that, but I'm, I'm also giving consideration to Councilmember Partially's additional question. So if you're willing to, Councilmember Partially, I'd like you get, to give you the opportunity to ask it since you've submitted the question.
Absolutely, I'll take section two.
Section three. I'd like to give that section to Councilmember Gilman. Section four. Let's go with Councilmember Madron.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that mean I choose one of those questions?
Yes, it does.
Okay, because neither of those were a favorite for me, so.
You could create.
Could I, could I create?
Yes, that's what the green are.
I just want to voice, I'm struggling a little bit with this.
Well, the reason I'm, so just to give you a little bit of insight into how I'm making this determination right now, I'm thinking about your interests, I'm thinking about what I know about your personalities, and I'm thinking about, you know, what it is that you understand about the city government.
And it's not that that I'm struggling with.
Okay.
You know, section five is really big. But, yeah, but even then, there's like several topics in there where like, I think that, that it's, it would be. I, I would rather scrap section four and, and assign an additional person to, to section five, because, I mean, there's just so many far-reaching questions in here that.
I can support that. I can support that.
That's fine by me.
I agree, because that's, that, those are, five is important.
Yes. So section five.
Need three people then.
Yep. So. So, Councilmember Madron, I would like you to take section five, one through three. So those are your options there. Questions, do you see that?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Mayor Protem Wen. Section five four through five seven. Councilmember Cooper, you got a question?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a suggestion that you pick three names and let those three folks wrestle through this whole topic set based on their interests and, and work. Is that, is that an okay adjustment to what you're doing? Like just get three people for section five and let them.
That's fine by me. I'm just going with what we originally decided, which was to let me decide, which was originally what we said.
If you want to keep going, that's fine, I'm totally fine with it.
Yeah, I just, I just want to note, there's like, you know, the way that it's getting broken up now is by each subsection, but there's like six subsections, which means that some of them won't be considered at all. So if three people get put into section five, that's less than a quorum. We can connect offline on how we want to.
Decide which ones specifically.
Yeah.
When, when we did this before Renata and I were given section five and between the two of us, we figured out what questions we were going to ask.
Okay.
But we let the council know before we did the night of it. So that would be my only question, my only suggestion is that you let us know which questions, you don't have to pick the exact one, but which ones you're leaning towards as councilmembers.
Okay, that's fine by me. So how about we choose Councilmembers Madron, Cooper, and Mayor Protem Wen for section five?
You do that one.
Section six will be myself. And I will close things out with section seven. Mayor Protem Wen.
Oh, are we counting section seven, the, the last bolded head as a subhead of section seven? Is that right? Is that an inclusion? So you lost, okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments on assignment of sections for question format? Councilmember Partial.
For my section, if any of you have any of these four, please let me know that you would prefer me to ask.
So we.
Councilmember.
We just talked about asking eight questions, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we, is, I thought I counted seven, breaking this down.
There's three and five, we took out four.
We took out four.
Is it eight? Oh, okay.
Two for section five.
Depending whether you count the introduction question.
Yeah, 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 okay.
It's still two minutes.
Yep.
Got it.
Forgot me.
You're asking three questions, man.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Gilman.
Mayor Payne, we should probably have an agreement about how and when we're going to share our questions so that Kelly can consolidate them.
I, I can clean this up and eliminate all the ones that you guys, the sections that you're not going to do and, and with all of the options on there and get that to you this week. So it's just, and all of the comments off too, so it's a cleaner document as well, so.
Yes, that would be great. And then once we give folks an opportunity to review that, then we would get another version that's scaled back even more.
You can, yeah, you can, yes, you can, we can, we can do that. If I hear back from you guys about which ones you want to assign, we can.
Okay.
Out of your sections.
Mayor Protem Wen.
So I know the mayor just agreed to that, so I don't want to be out of step here. But I would even say leave it as is, Kelly. I mean, I actually think the comments on the side really help inform us, you know, because we're not going to, all seven need, or six be together again until that time. And then, and it's really if we just, we all know that we're scrapping section four. And so I think, I think it might just be extra work for Kelly who has other things to do.
That's fair, but I think we're, I think we're saying the same thing just in different ways. So what I was just saying is that I would like to see a scaled down document once we have what final questions we're going to be asking so that we all aren't confused and we know exactly what we're, what we're going to be asking ahead of time.
And, and I'll just put out, Mayor, if it's okay, that, that we'll be better able to adapt if anything changes, if we have the actual question set in front of us that even.
Sure.
So how about we all get the questions that we want to ask to Kelly by a certain day this week with time for the three of us who are in this one section to communicate amongst ourselves. And then she can compile them and send them all back out. And whatever day that is that you need us to do it by, Kelly.
If you can get it to me like late day Thursday, I can get it back to you Friday. So you have the weekend to.
Great.
Decide you hate it or you want to change your mind.
City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, you're, you're heading in that direction and Kelly just kind of covered it there. So I think, just a reminder, you can approve all these questions. You have time on Monday before you get started. So I think if you get everything to Kelly, she can kind of send them back out so you can all noodle on them over the weekend. And then you still have one more opportunity on Monday before I actually start to kind of talk together and make sure you're all on the same page about the questions you want to ask before you actually begin.
Okay, it looks like we're good here. We're wrapping up, right?
Thank you.
Yes, nicely done, thank you, Kelly. All right, so I do want to just wrap up this section of our meeting just by reminding everybody that the council did receive 16 applications, which were due by December 15th of last year. And that council has reserved Monday, January 8th of next week for applicant interviews. And with that, we will move on to council reports. I'll start with the mayor's report. I had the privilege a few weeks ago of attending the new mayor's program at Harvard Kennedy School in Boston, Massachusetts. It was wonderful to meet so many new mayors and mayor elects at the time from across the country. I was the mayor that came the furthest for, for it. And so it was interesting to see that up on a map because I hadn't realized that when we got the list of, of who was attending ahead of time. And we covered a, a lot of subjects within just two and a half days. Things like time management, things like the responsibilities that mayors have as it relates to public safety. And very much, you know, focused on communication and understanding our roles as mayor, as mayors. And I have to tell you that it was incredible opportunity before even stepping into the role to get the opportunity to network. And now I have these relationships with, with folks from across the country that we can call upon each other based on our experiences and, and how things are going, particularly if we're dealing with certain events or occurrences in our communities that, that we could lean on each other for that support. So it was very nice to attend that program. I also want to mention the upcoming Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Event that is going to be taking place next week, or in two weeks rather, January 15th, I believe at noon at the New Life Baptist Church where I will be speaking. It is in Lacey, but it is a regional Martin Luther King Celebration. And so I'm happy to attend. And I will start to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I'd just like to give a huge congratulations to our Washington Huskies for their win this weekend. And I'm just hopeful that they will put enough points on the board before we sit down for, and I'm not a big sports ball guy, but when our Huskies are, are doing what they're, it's really cool to watch. And I just hope they can get a, a W almost all the way accomplished before we start interviewing on Monday evening. Otherwise I might have an earbud in.
Mayor Protem Wen.
I just want to share something that I, and I'm sure many, many, many other people are really excited about. I think it is a watershed moment. I was going to make a pun, but it's not appropriate. I was going to say bloodshed because, but it's a watershed moment because Bloodworks Northwest has changed their questionnaire form. They do like to send many emails, so, but I'm glad I opened this one. And this happened mid, I received this mid-December. And I just want to read something to you all and I, and I hope it spreads like wildfire. If you don't already know about it, I want you to tell everyone. Okay, so it says, "All potential donors, regardless of gender or sexual orientation, will be asked the same questions to determine if they are eligible to donate blood." And it says, "The FDA's previous donor eligibility criteria based on sexual orientation, which made it challenging for gay and bisexual men to donate blood, has been eliminated." I won't read the whole thing, but I'll include this part. "The new FDA policy further ensures safety of the blood supply, treats all potential donors equally, and enables more people the opportunity to donate blood." How cool is that? This is something that so many people have been challenged with, have struggled with not having the privilege to donate blood and contribute to saving lives in our community and beyond. And I, I really feel that for so long it has been such a privilege to donate blood. And, and there has been such discrimination about who can donate. And so here we are, another, another step forward, a huge step forward. And many, many, many people have worked on this for a long time for it to happen. So tell everyone, let's have a coffee and donate some blood. I'm all for that. Thank you, really exciting. Oh, and we have a Bloodworks Northwest very close to us. I think over on East Side Street, right in Olympia, so very cool, thanks.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. I, you know, that sort of makes me think of the Pulse nightclub shooting and when that happened. And the irony is, is that so many people who wanted to help their own community and they were unable to do so in, in that way. And so it is certainly appreciated that you mentioned that and good on us for, for moving forward as a nation. Any questions or comments for Mayor Protem Wen? Okay, Councilmember Partial.
I love that. Donate blood. I have nothing to report, Happy New Years.
Mayor, Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just wanted to again highlight the Martin Luther King Junior event that's happening Friday, January 12th at 7:30 at South Pigeon Sound Community College. This is the annual Thurston Group Scholarship, SPS celebration. And this year, they're going to have a key, a special keynote speaker named Spencer Pasinger, who's going to come in, who has been a Super Bowl champion team linebacker and then became a Hollywood writer and producer from South Central. He's going to tell the story of that journey and about educational possibility. And if you, and I, I'm hoping that we can get through our, the, the dinner at the conclusion of Friday's retreat in time to make our way over. And you could maybe, if you haven't RSVP'd to Susan, you could just let her know now how many of us are going to be able to attend as a council group. Okay, cool, great. So, and, and to the community, I hope you'll join us. Every year, it's such a highlight for me to, to hear from and, and recognize the scholarship recipients.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Madron.
Nothing to report.
And last but certainly not least, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I likely will have Councilmember Cooper's other earbud in my ear on Monday night. Just one item. Councilmember Madron says no, we don't have to share. Just a reminder, it is.
Is that the Cougars?
See, you did, Councilmember Cooper, you opened it up. It is that time of the year for your city manager to engage with all of you in my annual performance review. So I had a chance to talk with the mayor and former mayor Protem and agenda setting today. That is scheduled for January 16th. So we have a forum that we've used in the past that Susan will send around to all of you to gather your input on my performance. And then Susan can sum up all of that information that she gets from you and then present it to all of you and to me in time for the 16th. So watch your inbox. I'll ask Susan to get that sent out to all of you this week. And I'll talk with Susan about a time to get that all back so she has time to get it all ready to go. But we'll plan an executive session around that on the 16th at the end, conclusion of your meeting.
Any questions or comments for the city manager? All right, well, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.